We're getting into overtime.
Okay, this is the regular meeting of Joliet City Council for January, July, July 16th, 2013. chaired by Honorable Mayor, Honorable Mayor Tom Giurani. Invocation will be given by Reverend Matthew Robinson of Westminster Presbyterian Church at 1015 Winthrop Avenue in Joliet, and after which he will be asking to pledge to the flag. So please rise.
Let us come to God in prayer. Oh good and gracious God, you created all people in your image and we thank you for the astonishing variety of races and cultures in this wide world. Lord, enrich our lives by ever widening circles of friendship, and show us your presence in those who differ most from us, until our knowledge of your love is made perfect in our love for all your children. High God, holy God, you rule the ways of peoples and govern every earthly government, bring peace and goodwill among all people, give all an authority, the wisdom and strength to know your will and to do it. Help them remember that they are called to serve the people as lovers of truth and justice. Almighty God, bless those who hold office in the government of Joliet, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote the general welfare. Renew the ties of mutual regard that form our civic life and send us honest and able leaders. Help us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from various cultures and differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. All this, Lord, we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. [inaudible] If you would, please remain silent for a good friend of mine, Jerry Keer, who spent 28 years on the fire department and passed away Sunday.
Mayor Giurani?
Here.
Councilwoman Barber?
Here.
Councilman Girl?
Here.
Councilman Hug?
Here.
Councilman McFarland?
Here.
Councilman Morris?
Here.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Here.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Here.
Councilman Turk?
Here.
First on the agenda is approval of minutes. Is there a motion, the minutes of the pre-council meeting held on July 1st and of the regular meeting held on July 2nd stand approved as recorded? It's all moved.
Second.
Krista.
In motion and seconded to approve, Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Mayor Giurani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next council committee reports. Finance Committee report.
Your honor, the Finance Committee comprised of Councilman Girl, Councilman Hug, and myself met here in the conference room adjacent to the council chambers this afternoon at 5:30 to review the renewal of property and liability insurance. It looks like that we're going to have a 1.27% increase in that property liability insurance, which is a conservative increase. We reviewed the health insurance coverage. Right now, we're tracking pretty close to where we were last year, probably looking at a between 11% or 12% increase if things trend out through the end of the year. We also had a discussion of a dependent audit from Quality Health Claims Consultants, LLC. And what this company does, they come in and they look at everyone on the insurance coverage who has dependent coverage to see if they are eligible, those dependents are eligible, they haven't reached the age of 26, or if it's a grandson or granddaughter. And typically, they find between 2% and 8% errors. And they could save the city anywhere from about, I think conservative estimate is about 227,000, and if it goes all the way to 8%, about 900,000. The committee is going to take another look at it at our next meeting, and then we'll make a recommendation to the full council. We also reviewed the personnel summary, conference travel, and seminar expense, treasurers, reverse amounts, ripper claims, and found them all to be in order and recommend their approval.
Krista.
Land Use Committee report.
Yes, the Land Use and Legislative Committee, we met last Tuesday, July 9th, here in the council chamber. Present was myself along with Councilwoman Barber, Councilman McFarland, and also Mayor Giurani was present. We actually had a lengthy meeting, I would say. There was staff brought forth, mobile trailers, discussion, and they're going to get some more information and come back to the Land Use Committee in terms of duration of the trailers as opposed to permanent structures, trailers that's used by car dealers or other type of business for off the space or things of that nature. So they'll be bringing that, some more information back to us on that. We also discussed donation containers that's used by a lot of the charity organizations. And basically, is there need to be ordnance in place, and staff is preparing ordnance to be in place to regulate the donation containers as well as the spacing of them. Council McFarland also brought up the fact of allowing them to be manned, so that should be brought back to Land Use and then maybe to the full council. We had also a lengthy discussion on food trucks. There, I guess right now, there's three food trucks here in Joliet, and there's been ordinance in place not to allow them, I guess to some extent. So staff is also requesting that that be enforced, and the committee agreed with that as well to... But we also working with the operators of the food truck to give them some, a timeframe, I believe to the end of the year, to, what would you say, close or stop serving the food from the food trucks. Jim Tyber, our arbiter, he came and addressed the committee concerning tree program, replacement programs, there's been much talk about that, I guess is a subdivision that will be getting trees, not on the 50/50 program, but other areas of residents will be able to work with different, I guess, programs out in terms of getting a tree, at least one tree. And I believe we'll be hearing more about that real soon. We had another lengthy discussion on the rental inspection program that staff brought for. Basically, the major discussion is on single-family rental homes to be licensed, and that will help give our staffs more information readily on the terms of who the landlord is, because I know there's been some complaints from renters of single-family dwellings. So that was brought for us at the committee last week, as well as some other fees based that we're looking at some of the other communities where cities are imposing those. Mr. Benson informed us of three new locations for the signs, one being Larkin and Jefferson Street near the White Castle, McDonald Street, not McDonald, Hobo, I'm sorry, Hobo Street right there at the intersection where McDonald and BP is, where I guess the new conference center should be down the street, so that's a good location. Well, all three of them are, and the other is out by the mall. He's just had to work out some logistics with some of the property owners, not that they own the property, but just to make sure that they are fine with that, so he should be moving forward on those three signs. We have a private sign that would be on Collins Street and Woodruff Road. They would be, and that's also another good project that we're working through. I think that's, did I miss anything? Yeah, I think that's about it.
I think you covered it all.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Public Service Committee report.
Now, the Public Service Committee comprised of Councilwoman Barber, Councilman McFarland, and myself met yesterday afternoon prior to the pre-council meeting to review the contracts, change orders, pay estimates, final payments, found them all to be in order, recommended their approval. We also reviewed a proposed 2014 roadway reconstruction program, list of streets that will be overlaid and reconstructed in 2014. Looked at the Larue Crossing, the Business Park, Perimeter Roads project, had an update, which I think City Management went over yesterday, a little bit about the combined sewer overflow elimination project, we went over that. And then also had the, looked at a sewer inspection ordinance that Mr. Bob Pedersen has been working on, and there's a few things that we need to tweak on it before we send it to the full council, so it's on our agenda again for our next meeting.
Thank you.
I show no other reports. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question, please.
Sure.
And now, I'm dressed as the city manager, so there's no confusion, Tom. I brought up yesterday about the water department, anybody else with an emergency to work with the police department with the reverse 911 sector dividing the neighborhoods. So would that go to public service, or would that go to public safety? So there's no confusion which committee this should go to, because we really need to get something formal in place here, so there's no confusion when there's another emergency.
I think that because it's related to utilities, that would be under the jurisdiction of the Public Service Committee, and what we can do is have Jim Egan work with the chief's office and with Ben Benson to find out what's the most effective way of communicating with residents when there is a water main break or a sewer problem, and how we get the word out, and then report back to the Public Service Committee.
You're good with that, Tom, or Mike?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, thank you. So the next meeting, we could put that on the agenda? Okay, thank you.
Sure. Krista?
We did have a request to move up the proclamation this evening. It's proclaiming July 21st through July 28th, 2013, as Accessibility Awareness Week. Dale Rand is present to accept the proclamation.
Dale, want to come up to the podium?
I have a proclamation. Whereas equal access to goods and services has long been a fundamental expectation for all American citizens, including the citizens of Joliet, Illinois. Whereas Joliet, Illinois, one of the fastest growing cities in Will County with the population over 147,000, has thousands of people with disabilities, seniors, and any number of other individuals who would benefit from improved accessibility. Whereas these citizens continue to experience barriers to goods and services, and local businesses lose untold profits because of that lack of accessibility. Whereas accessibility advocates are focusing their efforts on the following three priorities to address what they see as necessary to promote compliance within the local businesses' community. Through leadership by the Accessible Cities Alliance, encourage voluntary efforts to remove structural barriers within local businesses, increase compliance of laws requiring equal access by persons with disability, and provide resources to individuals involved in creating and utilizing that access. Whereas the Accessible Cities Alliance, which is a broad-based network of community leaders, disability advocates, and business community representatives, seek to join forces with the city of Joliet in addressing the immense challenge of ensuring full and total accessibility for all citizens. Now therefore, I, Thomas Giurani, Mayor of the city of Joliet, on behalf of the Joliet City Council, do hereby proclaim that the week of July 21st through July 28th, 2013 be designated as Accessibility Awareness Week in the city of Joliet in honor of the 23rd anniversary of the American with Disabilities Act, and to continue our efforts toward increasing accessibility for all citizens. Signed, Thomas Giurani.
Thank you very much, Congressman.
Thank you, Council. Thanks, everybody here, for what you've done. I go back to the early, middle 2000s, between the, about after '05, maybe '04, working with your fine attorney and his council representatives and your inspection department, and we here in this city with you, you people did this, launched probably one of the first accessibility programs in this whole area. And this group, this is being used now as a pattern for others. We're having much more acceptability, and we're reaching out more now. So I thank you for what you've done by having such a positive attitude to support this audience of people. I myself never expected to be in this level of position, but this happens. We know not when, if it does happen, so... But knowing that there is accessibility, and you've done it so favorably, and I sit here and thank you, because I sat on many of the sessions that we had and talked about the probability, and we had to waive some people because it wasn't profitable, but there were other means to assess, to access the people together, being the client and the supplier. So I thank you for what you're doing, what you've done, to take this powerful act from the government and give it life. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, agenda items and reports. Treasurers' report for May 2013 is recommended this report be received and placed on file. Council memo 297-13, authorization to approve the proposed renewal of property and casualty coverage. It is recommended the city manager be authorized to execute a contract with Arthur J. Gallagher at Risk Management Services for the renewal of coverages and services for the city's consolidated property and casualty insurance program. And Council memo 299-13, a recommendation to solicit proposals for state advocacy and lobbying services. It is recommended the city manager be authorized to issue a proposal to solicit state advocacy and lobbying services.
So moved. Second. Questions? Krista?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Mayor Giurani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, under public hearings, Council memo 298-13, approving the annexation of 115.132 acres located on the east side of Patterson Road, north of Larue Road, the annexation of 110.021 acres located on the west side of Patterson Road, north of Larue Road, and the annexation of 20.306 acres located on the east side of Patterson Road, north of Larue Road. It is recommended that set on the table to the August 20th, 2013 council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Krista.
It's been motioned and seconded to table this to the August 20th meeting. Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Mayor Giurani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Under ordinances and resolutions, under ordinances, Council memo 300-13 was approved at yesterday's pre-council meeting. Council memo 301-13, an ordinance approving a reclassification of 1.5 acres located at 1,001 through 1,003 South Chicago Street from R2, single-family residential zoning, to I1, light industrial zoning. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved. Second. Questions?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Mayor Giurani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 302-13 was approved at yesterday's pre-council meeting. Under resolutions, Council memo 303-13, a resolution authorizing a tax incentive for the Navistar distribution facility. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved. Second. Krista?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Stay.
Mayor Giurani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, Council memo 305-13 was approved at yesterday's pre-council meeting. Approval of regular current bills. Council memo 307-13, regular payroll for June 14th through June 27th, 2013, $3,144,411.31. Treasurers' dispersments for June 2013, $21,726,724.15. And regular claims for June 2013, $2,443,484.72. It is recommended said regular payroll, treasurers' dispersments, and regular claims be approved.
So moved. Second. Any questions? Krista?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye, with the exception of those pertaining to my employer.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Mayor Giurani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Under bids and contracts, award of contracts. Council memo 309-13, award a contract for the 2013 Hickory Spring Creek Cleaning Project. Council memo 310-13, award the 2013 Spoils Halling Contract. Council memo 311-13, award a contract for the Drought and Road Street Lighting Project. Council memo 312-13, award a contract for the Drought and Road Sidewalk Project. It is recommended Council memos 309 through 312-13 be approved.
So moved. Second. Any questions? Krista?
Motion seconded to approve. Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Mayor Giurani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Amendments, change orders, and payments. Council memo 314-13, approve change order number three for the 2011-2012 Hazardous and Emerald Ash Borate Removal Contract. Council memo 315-13, approve change order number two and payment request number four and final for the Millsdale Roadway Improvements Project, 2012. It is recommended Council memos 314 and 315 be approved.
So moved. Second. Questions? Krista?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Mayor Giurani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Under mayor, the proclamation was previously presented this evening. Mayor Giurani's appointments were voted on at yesterday's meeting. Next, we have new business, not for final action or recommendation.
Mayor?
Yes.
I had one question, Tom. I think we mentioned at the last meeting, and I don't mean to be in a hurry, are we looking into the possibility of putting together some kind of summer program to help Jim Tyber? If we could reduce the cost over what's going to be increased per inch to cut down these trees, you know, maybe getting, I guess, the necessary equipment, another stump grinder is what I've been describing. Are we looking at that a little bit?
Yes, actually, Mike Uelitz and I discussed it today about the stump grinder and other equipment, and how we would go through the procurement process. There's an expedited process that we're looking at, so we can get that, get proposals before you as soon as possible.
Thanks, Tom.
Anything else?
Mayor?
Yes.
Actually, I have a couple items, if you don't mind. First of all, I've been getting a lot of complaints about loud noise, people playing music or having parties, and one of the complaints that I had is that we no longer require permits. And I discussed this with Chief Trafton the other day, that the permits are for, the ordinance says 500 people or more, but if you're just in the neighborhood, the music is till 11:00. So what I'm looking for is some clarification under ordinance, and if we need to set a time limit, because I get a lot of calls in the summertime where the music is too loud, it's after 12:00, and people can't get any rest. And what happens is explained to me by Chief Trafton, or the police officers go out there, and they tell the folks to turn it down, and of course, they meant the police leave, they turn it back up again, and it's back and forth, but they really have no recourse into shutting, like a neighborhood party down, or someone just having a barbecue. So I was wondering if we could do something to tweak that ordinance to make it a little more palatable, if we could work with Chief, unfortunately, he's not here this evening, but...
Brian's here.
Brian's here. Commander, would you like to comment on that?
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
There you go.
I did have a discussion with the chief in reference to the changes. We still have the laws that are on the books for us to enforce, noise complaint ordinance or disorderly complaints, those that would alarm or disturb the neighbors, so they could still be issued a compliance ticket for the laws that they do violate. We do that regularly when people call and complain in reference to a noise complaint for a party, what have you.
Okay, well, maybe we need to discuss this with Chief, because he said we could tweak this to make it a little more easier for our police officers when they do go to these homes, because it's, what we have now is just not working. And according to the, we don't need a permit, unless it's, the way the ordinance reads is a 500 people or more, but if you're just having a neighborhood party or something like, you know, you're having a family barbecue in the neighborhood, and the noise gets too loud, these are where the complaints are coming from, and they're repeated, and they don't want to be mean, but some people just don't comply when the police officers come out there.
How about if we put this in the Public Safety Committee?
Well, that's what I wanted to bring it up, so, again, public service, public safety, if we could bring it up there.
Sure.
And then my other thing that I wanted to bring up was, and it occurred to me when we were talking about Creamy Delight at the last council meeting, we own the property, and then I started thinking about we own the ballpark property, and we do have some repairs that need to be made, but there's never been a maintenance fund put in place. And I was wondering if that was something we could look at at the next budget?
For the...
For just a regular maintenance fund for the ballpark, or for Creamy Delight, or any other properties that we own, because when we have an issue, it's like, okay, now what do we do? We don't have the money to make these repairs. But if we had a fund in place to take care of our properties, it wouldn't be such a surprise when something's needed.
In the past, well, you're in the baseball committee with me.
Right.
In the past, it was taken out of the rent that we got from the baseball team, correct? For the repairs? Yes, that's how we've been managing it for the last five years, as far as the baseball park. I think what we've had, what's happened with the ice cream stand is that the roof repair is about a $30,000 expense. Our revenue off of the ice cream stand is probably about $14,000 a year, so the revenue doesn't cover the expense. We have been, since the last meeting, I've been in contact with some Route 66 people who are very supportive of the ice cream stand. They think it's one of those iconic stops along the Mother Road, and they'd like for us to do whatever we can to try to preserve it, and it turns out that there might be some grant money for those types of projects to preserve an iconic stand like that. So we're going to work on that in the next few weeks to see if there might be some grant money. I know the staff has already started the process. And then we've also looked at, perhaps, if a grant is available, having an architect come in to see if we might be able to take it, and maybe put the service window on the south side, so we don't have people backing up to the busy street, and not changing the character of the place, but making it a little safer. So I think this is probably more of a 2014 project, so we'll need a couple of months to work on it. What we would do is ask for proposals from local architects to give us some ideas on what they would like to see there, and maybe, you know, be a little creative with it, try to rely on some grant money to get the job done.
But again, there's not always monies available for the grants for other properties that we own, and, you know, I don't know that the rent is going to cover the baseball park with some of the repairs that's needed there, but we do have other properties, and, you know, if we had a little fund set aside, just like your household budget, you have a set, a maintenance fund set aside for, you know, basic repairs.
Yeah, I certainly don't disagree. I agree, capital improvement fund would be in order, considering what we've been through over the last five years, it's been hard to do those types of things. As we get into the 2014 budget, you know, we'll certainly look at our financial picture and see if there's a way of being able to put a capital improvement fund that's dedicated solely for real property improvements as opposed to other general expenses.
So, Mayor, would you like that to go to finance?
Yeah, probably finance committee.
Okay, thank you.
Jim.
I'm sorry. I was just curious, you know, speaking of the ice cream stand, is, Tom, and maybe you can help me with this, has there ever been discussion of potentially selling the ice cream stand to the operators instead of the city being a tenant and, and applying for grants to sustain it? I mean, I think that's the, the topic here to debate whether or not we should be the owner and operate it.
We've had internal discussions as a staff as to whether we should be the landlord business for facilities like this. I think the issue for this particular facility is the city owns about 40 lots that comprise the Broadway Greenway, almost everything except for four or five houses that still stand, and part of it was just keeping the ownership of the Broadway Greenway under city control. But with, you know, I'm not opposed to selling it if, if it makes sense and if there's a way of preserving the ice cream stand in a good condition, that's something that we should certainly look at. That'd be my recommendation. More of a policy decision for the council to consider, but maybe what we can do is once we get the cost items back and what it would cost to repair, also look at whether there might be a potential buyer out there for the facility.
What I might suggest, oh, I'm sorry.
Let's see, Councilman Girl, I think he's next.
Yeah, I just want to follow up with Councilwoman Coleman, said I think it's a great idea, but we actually, we do have a capital fund here. We transfer probably about two and a half to three million dollars into that fund each year, and you'll see that kind of carved out on the budget. It's not a maintenance fund, but it's a capital fund that we use to, you know, new fire trucks, road improvements, you know, water and sewer type of maintenance type of thing. So I, I don't know if that fund could be utilized for something like this, but, but we do have at the city a capital improvement fund for those types of major capital improvements, so.
And, Mayor, expand.
Spin.
And I'm well aware of the capital improvement fund, but it's never been enough to take care of, well, our obligations now. That's why I want to, like, you know, just like when you own a property, that, that's, what you're talking about, capital improvements, you're talking about fire trucks, police trucks, things, basic things that need to be taken care of the city, because most cities don't own a ballpark or an ice cream place or things of that nature. I'm talking about a separate fund just for those items alone.
Well, finance committee will look at it. Councilman Hug.
Thank you. I, Tom, I might, I'm, this might be something you've already thought of, too. I'm thinking outside the box, kind of just thinking out loud. In regards to Councilman McFarland's thoughts on the ice cream shop, if we can find this, if we do find enough money to put it back in, in the right shape, maybe long-term, we should look at, not making money on it, but turning it over, ownership over, because of the, what you just described, to the museum. Route 66 Museum, and whatever revenues they can go for, I mean, I'm not saying give them a ramshackle building. You know, if we get it back in the situation, turn it over to them if they're interested, it's something to explore, isn't it? I mean, even if the current tenants decided to stop selling ice cream, maybe they would say, we'll sell ice cream there for the dollars to put towards our programs.
Yeah, if not the museum, there may be another agency out there that has a preservation goal or mission, and I think it's certainly a good idea. This is one of those things that, you know, we have our challenges as far as the budget. Councilwoman Coleman raises a good issue here, and we, we do need to work the issue and make sure we've got money available to take care of these things. The problem is we have so many other competing needs, and, you know, we have to look at our core operations first, make sure we have sufficient funding for police, fire, water, sewer, roads, and then whatever's left over, we can get into these other things. And if we don't have money for those, then we do need to start looking at selling some of the assets, and that would be one of the early assets that I think we, we could sell.
Any other comments?
Next is mayor and council comments.
Suzie.
Just wanted to say now with our NOPT program coming back, our longtime NOPT representative or police officer is Mike Knowski, my, without going into detail, Mike Knowski's got, got some medical challenges right now that he's facing, so let's just keep him in our prayers. So he comes back because he's tremendous, tremendous asset out on the west side of District One and at the Louis Joliet Mall, who I had a discussion with today about the NOPT program. And I'm, I'm, I'm not going to steal the thunder from Councilman Oderkirk, maybe I can say something after he's done, because I think he might be giving a congratulations today.
Yes.
Okay.
No comment.
Yes, thank you. I do, big congratulations to my law partner, soon-to-be ex-law partner, Dave Carlson, who got the news today, he's going to be appointed as a judge here in Will County. It's a great achievement, as Tom Thanis knows, you've been through this before, and also want to congratulate David Garcia, who also is going to be a new judge here in Will County. And to the best of my knowledge, I think he's the first Hispanic to sit on the bench here in Will County. It's an outstanding achievement, I'm really happy and proud for both of them, so, congratulations.
Congratulations.
I would just like to remind people with this heat wave that we had, please do not
leave your dog in the car. Even though the windows open a little bit, it still gets hot in there, and if anyone sees an animal or a child in the car, you can call 911, or you can call the police department, they'll be out immediately to take care of the child or the dog or any animal that's left in a car. People just don't realize, it gets really, really hot in there, and we've had animals that have died in cars even when they've only been gone 15 minutes, because it's suffocation and it's horrible. So please, I know you love your dog, so if you love your dog, leave him at home and take him out when it's cooler, and if you see the dog, please call 911. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Councilman Turk.
Your honor, Saturday morning, I attended the ribbon cutting of the, you'll have to help me out with the name, it's the Hope Center.
Yeah.
Something like that, that you're on Oak Leaf Court and, and the industrial park behind St. Jude's Church. Linda LaSoto was here at the last meeting and, and talked about it, and you were there also at the ribbon cutting, and until you see it, it's, it's so impressive, you really, you really need to take a look at it, go out there and take a look at it. It's, it's stocked as well as any grocery store is. It is not only for, is for people who are in need, whether they could be, you know, people of, that fall in between the cracks, that they don't qualify for, you know, government assistance and link cards or any things of that nature, but it could be, they're having